Good afternoon and welcome for the National Capitol Planning Commission's June 4th Open Session Meeting. It's a real pleasure to have all of you joining us today, and I'd like to ask Ms. Costa to please take the roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood?
Here.
Great. Commissioner McMahon?
I am here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Gallus?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Spino?
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
And also, I would note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Schuyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Director of our Urban Design and Plan Review, are also in the meeting.
Wonderful. It's great to have all of you join us today, and thank you very much for all the effort it takes to make this happen. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, with righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world, and layer on top of that, we're saddened by the events unfolding across the nation and in Washington, DC, in the last week or so, as our citizens seek to express their despair, their fears, and frustrations. In our moment of silence, let us be mindful of the important opportunity the Commission has to promote healing and understanding in our beloved community. So during this moment of silence, we also ask for the strength to uphold the Commission's vital responsibilities with courage, safety, wisdom, and moral character. In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting Commission business. Votes for the Commission will be conducted by roll call. When Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, identify themselves, and request to be recognized. During presentations, make sure your webcam is off and you are muted. During Commission deliberations, please turn your webcams on. In general, please hold your questions until the end of a presentation if possible. During Commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each Commissioner if you have any questions or comments. When you wish to push forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. It's very important for you to identify yourself when making the motion or the second. We're all learning a lot about how to do this better, and I'm sure we'll continue to make adjustments as we go. Thank you for your patience with that. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the Commission must nominate and vote on who should run this June meeting, which is the second agenda item today. Is there a motion as to who should run today's meeting?
This is Mina Wright, so moved.
Is there a second to that?
I second that Tom Gallus run the meeting. Beth White?
Thank you. Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call? Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallus?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Spino?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
I think the eyes have it.
The eyes have it. Thank you, both Commissioners, for electing me to run this Commission meeting today. Agenda Item 3 is the Report of the Chairman. I don't have a lot to say, but this is our second remote Commission meeting. We again want to thank the staff and the IT professionals who have made all the preparations to help make this a successful meeting. I also want to especially thank the leadership of Mr. Acosta, who guides the Commission with a steady hand in all of this, and it gives us all great comfort to know that we are in good hands from the staff of the Commission. Thank you very much. With Agenda Item 4, I'd like to ask Mr. Acosta, Executive Director, if he has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I do have one brief announcement. Looking forward, we expect a very busy July 12th Commission meeting that includes the release of draft antenna and tree replacement guidelines, the comprehensive planned transportation element, and projects including the Union Station draft environmental impact statement and St. Elizabeth's Master Plan. We anticipate again that our July Commission meeting will be held online, given the ongoing COVID emergency. In addition to regular staff reports, there will be a number of related documents available to review. To provide the Commission and the public additional time to review this, we will notify you when these documents are posted on to NCPC's website, which will happen in advance of our monthly staff report distribution on July 2nd. Over the coming weeks, Secretary Costa will send the Commission email notices of document availability. We'll also publicize availability through our website, agenda notices, and social media. That concludes my brief presentation. You do have a report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the Commission have any questions for them? All right. Well, thank you. And let's move to Agenda Item 5, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Schuyler?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. At this time, I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Let's move to Agenda Item 6, which is the Consent Calendar. There are five items on this month's Consent Calendar agenda. The first item is for the U.S. Park Police Stables Replacement and Site Improvements located on the National Mall. This is submitted by the National Park Service. The second item is for a Second Amendment to the Master Plan for the Yards located in southeast Washington, DC. This is submitted by the General Services Administration. The third item is for Arlington National Cemetery's Southern Expansion Defense Access Road Project, submitted by the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration. The fourth item is for revised antenna replacements at the Wiley Federal Building in College Park, Maryland. This is submitted by the General Services Administration. And the last item is Review of the District of Columbia's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2021 to 2026, submitted by the Mayor of the District of Columbia. Is there any discussion on the Consent Calendar items? Okay, so can I have a motion then to approve the Consent Calendar? Please state your name when making such motions. So moved, Peter May. And then could there be a second?
Second.
Second. This is Linda Argo.
Okay. I think, Ms. Costa, those have been confirmed, the motion and the second, correct?
Yes. Commissioner May, seconded by Commissioner Argo.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we take up a vote? Okay. Ms. Costa, can you please then take the vote by roll call? Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallus?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Spino?
Abstain.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Abstain.
Thank you. I believe the motion was carried.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's move to Agenda Item 7A, which is the Approval of the Final Master Plan for the Sutland Collection Center in Maryland. Ms. Herr, can you please start us with the presentation? We can all, those of us who would like to go off camera for now can do that while Ms. Herr gives her presentation.
Yes, let me just bring...
Please mute as well.
Can you see the slides?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. The Smithsonian Institution has submitted the final master plan for the Sutland Collection Center at 4210 Silver Hill Road in Sutland, Maryland. The Commission reviewed the draft master plan in February and provided recommendations related to parking, access, and security. The Smithsonian has addressed these recommendations, which I will cover in the following slides. The purpose of the final master plan review is to ensure that issues raised at the draft review have been resolved and that the master plan has fully considered and addressed all applicable campus elements. I will quickly re-acclimate the Commission to the Smithsonian Collection Center, also known as the SCC, which occupies 110 acres in Prince George's County. The SCC is bounded by Silver Hill Road to the south, Sutland Parkway to the northeast, and Old Silver Hill Road and residential neighborhoods to the west. The Sutland Metro Station is to the east on the other side of Sutland Parkway. The site is bounded by historic properties to the east, including Sutland Parkway and the Sutland Federal Center Historic District. Surrounding land uses also include single-family and multifamily residential to the south and northwest, commercial uses to the south and west, and additional federal uses to the east. The SCC is comprised of a total of 1.3 million square feet in multiple facilities. The Smithsonian has utilized the site for collection storage since the 1950s, when the original Garber Collections Building, pictured here in the top left, were constructed. All of these buildings will eventually be removed over the 40-year master plan timeframe. The Smithsonian added the Museum Support Center in 1983 in a POD format for ease of expansion and internal space organization. An additional POD 6 is planned for the building at the western end. The CRC Building, Smithsonian Gardens, and Fleet Maintenance Buildings will remain, while the Botany Greenhouse and Osteo Prep Labs will be relocated to make room for future buildings and additions. The campus is closest to the Sutland Metro Station with service on the Green Line. Several metro and local bus routes run in the immediate vicinity of the site, as shown here. While the site is within walking distance to the Sutland Metro Station, the physical route on Silver Hill Road is dangerous and includes crossing three different slip lanes and a driveway with no crosswalk, as seen in these images of the route heading towards the SCC. Proposed improvements to this route will be discussed in a later slide. Existing access to the site is from three secure entrances, two on Silver Hill Road and one on Old Silver Hill Road. Parking on-site is spread over several parking lots or along some of the access drives. The site currently has 391 parking spaces for employees and visitors. The Commission recommended at the draft master plan review that the Smithsonian develop a detailed plan to reduce employee parking with clear milestones and strategies for attaining the 1-3 goal over the next 20 years, which they have done, and I will review in the following slide. The SCC is heavily wooded, with a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees on the northwest and portions of the south along Silver Hill Road, creating a dense buffer from adjacent land uses. There are also steep slopes leading to the site from Sutland Parkway. The site will retain just over 900,000 square feet of the existing 1.3 million. The buildings to remain are noted with a teal star and include the Museum Support Center, the Fleet Management Building, the Smithsonian Gardens Greenhouse, and the National Museum of the American Indian Cultural Resource Center. The new facilities totaling over 1.5 million square feet are indicated with an orange star, the largest of which is the new Collections Storage Complex, which will be fully built out at the 40-year timeframe. The remaining facilities are either planned additions or relocations of existing facilities, including POD 6, the Botany Greenhouse, and the Osteo Prep Lab. Staff supports the proposed layout of the new Collections Storage Buildings, which are arranged around a common open space that connects with the other administrative buildings on the campus, and finds that the site plan meets the institution's needs for collection storage, docking, and loading, while also providing a more human-scale design for employees and visitors to enjoy. The final master plan breaks down the planned improvements into phases. Because this is designed as a 40-year plan, not all of the implementation will happen in the first 20 years. The focus is on relocating some facilities and the POD 6 addition, and making space elsewhere in the Smithsonian system to be able to remove the Garber Buildings, which will allow for the construction of the first of the Collections Storage Modules. As such, staff notes the Smithsonian will implement the plan in several phases, which are tied to other Smithsonian museum projects over the next few decades. The final master plan includes several improvements to access and circulation, including a new main vehicular entrance with visitor center and security checkpoint, an internal pedestrian path for employees, and bicycle and pedestrian improvements along Silver Hill Road. At the draft review, the Commission noted there were improvements needed to the Transportation Management Plan, including a parking plan to reach a 1-3 ratio and more detail on the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. The Smithsonian has addressed these requests, which I will cover in the next slides. The unsafe conditions for bicyclists and pedestrians on Silver Hill Road limit the ability of staff to safely access the metro station. The Smithsonian is proposing improvements to the section of Silver Hill Road that they control. At the draft review, the Commission requested the Smithsonian submit information of the timing and coordination of the improvements. The final master plan indicates that the improvements will be constructed with the new main entrance project, planned for fiscal year 2031. In the interim, they have committed to work with the National Park Service, the Maryland State Highway Administration, and others to make safety improvements for the entirety of the pedestrian route. As such, staff notes that the Smithsonian has agreed to convene a meeting with the National Park Service, Maryland State Highway Administration, and General Services Administration on the proposed bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Silver Hill Road, and requests that the Smithsonian notify the Commission of any substantial progress in their effort to coordinate on the safety improvements on Silver Hill Road. At the draft review, the Commission noted there were several issues with parking, including data inconsistencies and the Transportation Management Plan that was only set to achieve a goal of 1 to 2 instead of 1 to 3, as required in the comprehensive plan. The Smithsonian has updated the plan to address these concerns. The final master plan includes the following actions: a detailed employee parking survey to address inconsistencies in the data and update the TMP; eliminating parking as part of upcoming building projects, which, along with increases in staff, will help them achieve the goal of 1 to 3 over the 20-year master plan period; evaluating a variety of transportation demand management strategies, including but not limited to: a shuttle shared with nearby federal campuses to the metro station; paid parking or parking passes to ensure that the SCC parking is available to those that need it; and improved internal pedestrian accessibility. As such, staff notes that the master plan has been updated to address recommendations by the Commission, and commits to achieving a 1-3 parking ratio, and reduces the overall number of parking spaces on-site over the initial 20-year planning horizon. And staff requests that the Smithsonian submit updated Transportation Management Plan metrics to NCPC once they have completed the detailed survey proposed for fiscal year The Smithsonian is proposing a 10-foot-high perimeter security fence to prevent theft and damage to the property and collections. At the draft master plan review, the Commission requested additional information regarding the fencing, including a security threat analysis to justify the 10-foot height, tree and vegetation removal plans, and the proposed lighting in the 25-foot clearance zone, as well as a robust landscape plan to mitigate for any loss of contiguous habitat in the wooded area, along with the impacts of the nighttime lighting. In addition, we requested information about improvements to the streetscape aesthetic along Silver Hill Road. To address this request, the Smithsonian has provided additional details in the final master plan about existing tree preservation, landscape plans, and dark sky compliant lighting for the woodland fence, and additional details on the timing of the fence replacement on Silver Hill Road. While this information is helpful, staff remains concerned about the proposed 10-foot height of the fence, and recommends the Commission note that while the Commission finds a perimeter or security fence is warranted, given the important collections at the campus, details regarding specific location, height, clearance zones, and lighting will be reviewed and considered when the Smithsonian submits the projects in the future, approximately 10 years from now, and requires the Smithsonian to include an updated security analysis with these future project submissions, as campus needs and the surrounding context may change with implications for the fence, including height, location, vegetation removal, and Currently, the Smithsonian has more than 155 million objects and specimens, 163,200 cubic feet of archives, and 2.2 million library volumes that include irreplaceable national icons, examples of everyday life, and scientific material vital to the study of the world's natural and cultural heritage, covering subjects from art to zoology. These are housed in more than 2.1 million square feet of collection space. The SCC is one of the primary offsite facilities for these collections. However, many of its facilities need replacement or renewal. In addition to improving the quantity and quality of their collection storage, the Smithsonian also has plans to improve collections' access, environmental stewardship, and access and circulation. The Smithsonian has generally addressed the Commission's requests from the draft review, and staff believes the proposed final master plan meets the NCPC master plan guidance, and therefore, staff recommends the Commission approve the final master plan for the Smithsonian Institution's Sutland Collection Center located in Prince George's County, Maryland. As I have read the recommendations throughout the presentation, I will not repeat them here, but I am happy to answer any questions. Additionally, Anne Trowbridge, Jane Passman, and Bill Tompkins from the Smithsonian are available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Herr. You may stop sharing your screen. Before we begin the Commission discussion, I'd just like to ask if any Commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicants before our discussion begins. Okay, so now we'll open this up to Commission for discussion. I'll go in a round robin format, using our normal seating order as a way to kind of keep order to at least the first round of discussion here. So first, let me start with asking Commissioner Trueblood if you have any comments or questions.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Van?
Good presentation, and I think good way forward on the traffic and parking issues. I have no questions.
Thank you. Commissioner May? Any comments or questions? I have no questions. Commissioner Argo? We can't hear you, Commissioner Argo.
I bet you can now. There we go, because I turned the mic on. I have no questions. I was pleased to see the improvements, particularly, and some of the adjustments that were made in relation to the perimeter and the, what do you call it, the area, you know, outside and inside the perimeter, those clear zones, that I found the discussion of that interesting. And I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
I don't, excuse me, I don't have any questions, but I do want to echo Commissioner Argo's comments. I appreciate the participation and the cooperation with Smithsonian to address the issues that we brought up the last time, and I think this is a great step forward and a lot of progress. Thank you.
You. Commissioner Wright?
I have nothing to add, if you can believe it.
We believe it. Thank you. Commissioner Dixon? Any comments or questions?
I have no, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
No comments or questions.
You. Commissioner Spino?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I'm good. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, I would just want to kind of say how much I appreciate the plan enhancements, particularly to the reduction of parking over time. I think that we are all in lockstep in terms of the vision for the master plan, which seems to be a very smart and thoughtful master plan for this really important and vital campus. I do obviously want to reinforce the idea that we need to continue to work in partnership to kind of address the unsafe pedestrian conditions of the surrounding area. This is a facility that's located within a reasonable walking distance to a metro station, and yet, I think we all must agree that in current conditions, it would be quite unsafe to expect that kind of large portion of the people working at the facility to have to use the metro station because of the access from that station to the facility. So we really want to encourage that partnership for establishing the new RAB with the National Park Service, the Maryland State Highway Administration, and Maryland General Services Administration. So thank you for the work, and I think, as you're hearing from all the Commissioners, we appreciate the thought and the value of this important community, and we look forward to seeing it as it plays out over the next several decades. So with that, are there any other comments or questions that anyone would like to add before we go to vote? Okay, then let me ask if there's a motion to approve the final master plan for the Sutland Collection Center in Maryland. Please make sure to state your name.
This is Paul McMahon. I move that we accept the master plan.
You. Is there a second?
This is Linda Argo. I second.
Thank you. So, Ms. Costa, have we recorded the motion and the second?
Commissioner McMahon made the motion. Commissioner Argo seconded.
Right. So could you then please take the roll call, and Commissioners, please just say yes, no, or abstain?
Yes. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallus?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Spino?
Same.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay. It seems like the motion is approved with two abstentions. Thank you, everyone. I believe there's no further items on the agenda, so... I believe there's no further items on the agenda, so this concludes the June 4 Commission meeting. If there's no further business, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.